Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the San Marcos City Council meeting for July 26, 2022, and I'd like to call the meeting to order. And if you could please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And if you could please remain standing, we have Justin Burkholder from North Hills Baptist Church here this evening. And we're sorry to see that this is actually going to be your last meeting because you are moving away, aren't you?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
We're sorry to see you go, but we wish you the best of luck.
Thank you.
And thank you for spending this evening with us and giving our invocation as your last thing to serve San Marcos.
Thank you.
And for all of you at home that you don't know, Justin is our chaplain for our fire department. So we sure rely on him and we really appreciate all your service to our city.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate it. Let's pray. Dear God Almighty, I want to say thank you so much for this evening and thank you for the wonderful city that we get to live in. And God, I thank you for even the eight years that you gave me here. Lord, my family's grown. I've seen a boy graduate from high school. And life's been good. I want to say thank you for the great neighbors and the great people in our community and the great staff of the City of San Marcos. Lord, our city council, our mayor. God, I want to say thank you. I'm a beneficiary tonight of so many people investing in my life. So we come before you and we need guidance and wisdom as we approach another meeting, not just as something as typical and as usual, twice a month, but with the affairs at hand of the City of San Marcos and for the future. I pray that you give wisdom to our city council members. Thank you for them. Thank you for their dedication and service. I pray that you bless their families and provide their needs financially and physically and spiritually. I also pray for our mayor and I thank you for her and I pray that you just bless her family. And God, I pray you continue to give them strength. Lord, tonight we pray for our president and our vice president. We ask that you give them wisdom as they make decisions for our nation and it affects us here. Think about our governor, our lieutenant governor as well. You're very good to allow us to live in the great state of California and this wonderful city of San Marcos. Thank you for the fire department and all their labor of love and their work and their hard work that they've shown and dedication to our community. So ever grateful again for all that you've done. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Justin. You may be seated. Thank you. Okay, Mr. Scullit, could we please have the roll call?
Councilmember Musgrove is absent this evening. Councilmember Nunez?
Present.
Councilmember Walton?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Jenkins?
Here.
And Mayor Jones?
Here.
Okay, if the council could please meet me down at the podium. We have here proclamations honoring the North County Boxing Gym youth athletes this evening. Thank you. One of my very favorite things to do here in the city is to honor our young people that are doing extraordinary things. And so we have some athletes here and of course their parents that have spent a lot of time and effort getting them to practices and to their meets and all of that. So we're very grateful for you. And then also we have both of their coaches here this evening with us. So anyway, I'm going to read the first proclamation and then I will call you up by name if you wouldn't mind joining us and then you can shake all the council members or fist bump them, shake their hand or fist bump them. But we really appreciate you all being here this evening. And then for the rest of the audience that is not part of the celebration, please join in because we're really excited to have them here this evening. Okay, so the San Marcos City Council does hereby present with, and I'll read your names. We're going to start out with Coach Pablo Espino with an honorable certificate of recognition for coaching San Marcos youth athletes in the Southern California State Amateur Boxing Championships. We, the city council of the City of San Marcos, congratulate you on your successful coaching and thank you and your athletes for representing San Marcos so well in the tournament presented today, July 26, 2021. Come on down. And then I am going to put you coaches on the spot and hopefully you'll tell us a little bit about your athletes and all the wonderful things that they've done. So next is Coach Tony Contreras. Come on down. And then I'm going to call you athletes, one by one. Ivan Ortiz. Wait, is that a belt there? I think we might want to see that. Oh, that's pretty impressive. Wait, are you going to put it on? You don't have to, but it is, it is cool. I'm just saying. Oh, my gosh, it's pretty amazing. There you go.
Thank you.
You're very welcome. Jesse Sanchez. Okay, Mia Gutierrez. Good job. Okay, you can put that over your shoulder too if you'd like. They are cool, just saying. Paula, is it Paula or Paola Ortiz? Paola. Okay, that's what, Paola. Okay, my apologies. Look at you. Ray Pina. Tony Guerrero. Tony? Oh, okay, I'm going to give this to Coach. Oh, lucky him. All right, so if you could come down and just give us a few words, that would be wonderful. Thank you.
We flipped a coin and I lost. I just wanted to inform everyone who doesn't know me or people who do not know me how we got started here in San Marcos. I was a school teacher for thirty-some years. And the first few years I concentrated on my, I'm teaching my classes, actually. And I coached also at the high school level. I coached soccer and I coached volleyball. One season during, I think it was volleyball, I had about twenty-five students, twenty-five of my students come over to me, to my room, wanting to start a boxing program. I don't know how they found out, but I used to box in Escondido. I grew up in Escondido and in nineteen, Buck asked me how long I've been here in San Marcos. I've been here since nineteen eighty. My wife, longer than I've been here. She was one of the first residents over here in the Prokhorov Ranch. But anyway, I had about twenty-five students come to me and asked me to start a boxing program. I was happy coaching soccer and coaching volleyball and I really didn't care. You know, I had left boxing behind many, many years ago when it was time for me to turn pro. My trainer was kind of forcing me to turn pro and my father was kind of urging me to go into education. So my dad won. So these guys, you know, found out and they persisted so much that I decided, okay, let's do something. The principal that I, that was at San Marcos High School at the time was Wes Walzvic, no, excuse me, Marv Glusak. I don't know, for some of you older people here, you might remember Marv Glusak. But anyway, he was very instrumental in helping us, you know, get started. And then another city councilman from Free San Marcos, who has passed away, may he rest in peace, Vince Andrade, was also very instrumental in helping us to get started. So, you know, one thing led to another and it grew and we just outgrew the place that we had gotten. So we went to Vista and in Vista, we stayed there for about nine years. That's when a former boxer of mine decided to, you know, to join our boxing program. Pablo Espino is, this guy, you wouldn't know it now, but he was probably one of the best athletes to come out of San Marcos High School. All the coaches were after this guy. They were. The football coaches recruited him. He wanted to box and every, every time they went to practice, I don't know if you guys remember the old high school, but I was, I would stand at the top of the stands up there watching this guy practice. He would look up and he would be embarrassed because he knew he was supposed to be at my practice, not football practice. But eventually I got him. Eventually I got him. Now he's my right-hand man. So things grew and we are now some thirty-something years later. We're still at it. And what I want to say now is in conclusion, because they told me to be brief. These guys, we entered them into a tournament not too long ago during the summer. There's a big tournament, state of California tournament up in Menifee. And most of these guys are green, are very, they're novice. And the two that I want to recognize are the two with the belts because those are the champions, the champions out of that, out of that tournament. And there were over four hundred, I would say over four hundred boxers there. They had three boxing rings going like eight hours a day. There were over sixty bouts in each ring. So that'll give you, that gives you an idea as to the competition, how many people these guys had to, you know, kind of surpass. Ivan, Ivan is probably one of the standouts of the whole tournament because we entered, he's actually a novice boxer, novice meaning less than ten bouts. And we entered him in the novice category. There was only one boxer in the whole tournament that would be able to box him and they decided to pull him out. So he would have been out of competition. So I talked to his dad and we thought, well, he's, he's good enough to be in the open category, which means if you have more than, some, some boxers can open at five bouts. And then he could compete against guys that have over a hundred bouts. That's just the luck of the draw. He was entered in the one hundred and fifty-four pound plus category, which means that at his age group, which is thirteen and fourteen, yes, he's only fourteen. In that category, he could fight anyone that weighs more than a hundred and fifty-four pounds. Unfortunately, we boxed a guy that was probably around two hundred pounds the first night and had twice as many fights as Ivan. But I mean, that's what we were there for. Ivan won. Ivan defeated this guy. Yeah. So that put him into the championship rounds and the following night, again, here we go. Luck of the draw, another big guy. It was at least twenty pounds heavier than Ivan with a lot more experience. Ivan easily, easily defeated him the second night. That won him the championship. So that's why I'm kind of telling you this story because that's extraordinary. I mean, you don't see that too often in tournaments. And he's going to continue, you know, continue competing and hopefully in November, we will be going to Arizona with this group to compete at a tournament called the Gene Lewis Tournament, which is another big tournament. Last year we went, there were over six hundred boxers there. So that gives you a little bit of an idea as to what we're doing and we continue to, to progress. And it all started by getting kids off the streets, which I know that some of you who have lived here in San Marcos, you've seen the changes. You've seen the problems that we have in our streets, in our communities. And this is our little, our little bit of trying to get kids into something productive, something that we always tell them, your classes come first. Education comes first. If boxing interferes with that, it will not happen. Education comes first. We just lost, unfortunately, one of our better female boxers. Unfortunately, but fortunately she was accepted to Cal State San Marcos and, and she, she's going on to education. So she chose education and we're still hoping that she comes back. But, but if it's for education, that's perfectly okay. So anyway, this is our, our group and we plan to be here for a while. And everybody tells me, you're still doing it after thirty, yes, I'm still doing it after thirty-something years. Thank you very much for having us.
Okay, next on our agenda would be the consent calendar. Do we have a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, motion passes. Moving on to our oral communications, we have, I believe, two. Yes. Okay, so the first one is Theodore Cabanis regarding housing prices and vaccine. Oh, yeah, sorry. Come right, right up to the podium. I'm sorry, I forgot to push the, you can just pull that across and go ahead and speak. Thank you.
Uh, thank you. My name is Theodore Cabanis. I'm grateful to be here. I have a lot of respect for what you do and congratulations to the boxing family. And I've been a resident in San Diego for some time. I was born and raised in California. And I, five years ago, lost a career in cellular technology and kind of hit a rock bottom. Lived in my car for fifteen months. And the last time I rented was ten years ago. And I rented a place that was fourteen ninety-five for a two bedroom, two bath for my family and that was affordable at the time. And here it is ten years later and I'm looking for a place to live. I finally have a savings. By the grace of God, I found a new career in transportation. And I have a savings and I've been looking for apartments for my son. I have four years until he's eighteen and I want to raise him to be a respectable adult. And I need an apartment to do that. And I've looked at apartments and they range from twenty-five hundred to four thousand dollars in San Marcos. And the twenty-five hundred dollar ones are one bedrooms and most of them have a one-year waiting list. And I made eighty thousand dollars last year and it's the most money I've ever made. And I don't qualify for the ones that are three thousand dollars. And I wouldn't be able to afford them if I could. And I think with the implementation of Zoom and people living in San Diego but working in New York, I think our population has grown. So I did some investigation. I've asked these apartments, I said, I make twenty-five thousand dollars more than the median income. How is anyone affording these apartments? And they all suggested that I get a roommate. And I said, I'm a forty-four-year-old father, single father, and that's, I've been living in my friend's garage for three years and I'm done with the roommate thing. I was done with the roommate thing when I was twenty-three. The other thing I want to talk, so thank you for listening to me. The other thing I want to talk about is I would like to somehow implement some kind of incentive program to renters in San Diego that have lived here longer than ten years to keep the people that have, were born and raised here to stay here. That could be anything from capping out rent or some sort of priority to people that have lived here longer than ten years to get rent other, over the people that are moving here from out of state. The other thing I want to talk about is the vaccine. Last June, my son got the Pfizer vaccine at the age of thirteen, contracted a rare blood disorder called ITP. There's two types of ITP. There's primary and secondary. The secondary one is chronic. He got the chronic one. So he's going to have it for the rest of his life. He no longer produces blood platelets. I have written letters to the editor of San Diego Union Tribune about it. And I have written Nancy Pelosi, Donald Trump, Joe Biden, and I get automated returns. Nobody seems to be listening to our cries. I'm filing a suit against Pfizer. My lawsuit is in February. Eight lawyers won't take my case because Pfizer has the English King sovereign immunity apparently from the United States and they can't be sued. So I'm on my own with this thing. I would just, I'm speaking about it because I just want to raise awareness. I know it's a very political thing with the vaccine, but it is dangerous. And the FDA announced in January that the vaccine is causing ITP in a, in a large number of, of clients. His doctors even told me that a lot of kids since my son came in are getting ITP. They're just, they're getting the primary, the first one, which is not chronic. My son is the one chronic case. So please keep me in your prayers and again, thank you for listening to me. God bless.
Thank you, Theodore. Okay, our next speaker is Marlene Walter.
Okay, thank you, city council. You've seen me many times. It's still on the same subject, but a little different. Now, some of the things are different. Now we have investors who are buying up the mobile homes and they're starting to rent them back or they're flipping them and making the profit. And the low income or the people who we were trying to be able to have move in are not affording it anymore. They're paying for a mobile home that they have to pull out seventy-five to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars just to get the lot. Then they pull the house out, put a new house in. And I have a friend who used to live there and would like to do the pulling out herself, but the investor comes along, is offering more. I thought homes that were nineteen seventy and before, when I purchased mine, I was told that all the nineteen sixties would be removed, sixty-nine, sixty-eight, due to asbestos, aluminum wiring and old plumbing. Instead, they're flipping them with the old house roofs on top. Some of the flippers are taking everything out, gutting them, putting in insulation. But let's say some, they look good. You think they look good. They still have the old rubberized roof. Maybe five layers maybe have leaked. A lot of them I know for a fact had mold. One that got pulled out was sold for seventy-five thousand and it said could not be used as a flipper or lived in. And so the guy pulled it out and brought in a new one, sold it for three hundred and eighty thousand dollars. I paid, overpaid at the time when I bought mine thirty-six years ago. They were asking forty-six and I paid forty and then they proceeded to drop to ten, all of them around me. So that's one of the things. Our rent is coming up soon again and I'm sure they're going to ask for a big increase. But again, when I moved in, there were to be no fences. It was a fire restriction. Now we have six-foot fences between the houses. The fire department has to go through. They'll be lucky if they could knock them down. But mobile homes burn really fast and they cannot get the hoses across the back of mobile homes. People are putting patios on the common ground, coming out over a bank and putting in, but the banks aren't being maintained. Houses are being rented out. Originally, no mobile in a rental park could be rented out. The investors have bought it. They're renting them out because like this gentleman said, they could get three thousand dollars a month for renting them out. There is also the problem now of cars parking on the streets because when you have two families and supposedly they're all adults and also supposedly they're seniors, they have three and four cars. But there are children who are being born during the time they lived in the mobile park who are now four years old and we discussed that and no one wants to make waves or say anything. We have daycares now in the park. People are watching their grandkids. And yes, we understand, but then they come and use the pool and it says no children under, like a year old who doesn't have who doesn't have control, but nobody listens. Due to more families, we have people parking at night. The fire department, when they come for a rescue or ambulance, has trouble getting down our streets. I can't even read my own writing. Oh, the jacuzzi finally got turned on. So that's more than two months that it was turned off. And they decided they weren't going to repair it, but that they would just allow to put in and repair the heating element that the jacuzzi broke down. Also, they painted the surface area, the walkway, on top of the pool, but they haven't washed it in two months. And it is filthy. You walk on it, it's dirty, and you see a black layer. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Marlene. The next speaker is Paul Mendoza. We know that you were... You wanted to speak on number 18, but couldn't stay till the end, so right now would be a great time for you to speak up, if you don't mind.
Okay.
Thank you.
I mean, okay. So, one thing, I put item 18 because I couldn't find the NCTD report. The reports that all say "note and file" on the website. Can I get those?
So actually, Councilmember... Sorry, Deputy Mayor Jenkins is our representative on North County Transit District. We don't generally actually have the agendas on our website, but you can find them on Go... I think it's GoNCTD.com. And then you can look it up by agenda, and you can get that printed out from the meeting that you're looking to speak about. But if you want to just add some comments this evening about North County Transit, thank you.
Sure, sure. So I had that. So, I'm Paul Mendoza. I've lived in San Marcos since 2005 with my wife and two kids. I live in the Ranch of Santa Elena community. I recently started working out of the Union Cowork location, which is great. I founded a software startup called Sigparser. We have seven employees. They're mostly all working remote, but any future employees will likely have... Try to hire them in that area so they can work out of the coworking spot, which is a really nice place to work out of. But I want to talk a little bit about transit in our city, and specifically traffic in the 78. I think we all know the 78 is a mess. There's traffic on the weekends in the middle of the day. It's very painful. And so I want to talk about not just like 78, but also just traffic in general. So I know like this week, I want to have one of my employees come up here to my office. He lives in downtown San Diego. He doesn't have a car. Because in downtown San Diego, you can actually get around without a car because they have trolleys and buses and pretty good bus service. So he's coming up here. So we went and looked at how long it would take him to get up here. The fastest route is a bus that will take an hour and 14 minutes to get from Petco Park to Escondido. He then waits 10 minutes. Then he takes an eight-minute sprinter ride, which isn't bad, and then a seven-minute walk from Cal State San Marcos Station down to Union Cowork. For someone that wants to get from Petco Park to here, it's about two hours. For comparison, it's about three and a half hours to get to LA from my house if I take public transit all the way. And that's a much further distance, if you look at a map, much further distance. So by car, for comparison, that trip from Petco Park to my house would take about 35, 55 minutes with traffic. As we keep growing, the 78 is just getting more backed up. And I know it's like, it's like, you know, everyone pulling water out of the Colorado River. Everyone thinks, "Oh, I got my..." So every city just keeps building because they're like, "Well, if we don't build, Vista's going to build, and Oceanside's going to build, and everyone's just going to pack on the freeway, so let's build ourselves, and we'll just pack it on, and then we'll just, you know, we'll expand it later," right? So I don't think we should be expanding the 78 freeway. I think we should be looking for alternative ways of encouraging more people to be using public transit. There should be. San Marcos, it feels like it's becoming like the economic engine of North County. It feels like we should have a really good transit center in San Marcos where you can get on a bus and you can take it directly to San Diego. You can take a bus directly to Temecula. Because I know there's people coming to San Marcos from Temecula. There's people traveling here. And what we're doing, every time that we expand the freeway, we're just inducing demand so that we're making it so someone can live in a cheaper area, not pay housing property taxes there, and then they travel all the way through a bunch of cities to San Marcos. I know when my wife and I were looking for a house in 2012, we were living in San Marcos, but we needed more space. And so we were like, "Well, let's go move to Oceanside," because we could get a really big house in Oceanside, and then we could go down to Ranch of Bernardo where we worked. And we were going to travel through Oceanside Vista, San Marcos, and Escondido, and then into Ranch of Bernardo. So we were going to add a bunch of traffic along all that way, and all of the cities, we're going to have to pay for our luxury of adding all of that traffic all along the way. So I would just like to say that we need to add more public transit options so that we're trying... So a bus can hold 30 times the capacity of a car. Let's push people more towards buses. And maybe that even includes crazy ideas like putting a toll on the 78. You know, it's getting to the point where maybe during rush hour, we need a toll on the 78 to just reduce demand. Maybe if you're carpooling, there's no toll. Maybe if you're going less than three or four exits, there's no toll. But people who are commuting shouldn't be... We shouldn't be subsidizing long-distance commuters. Thanks.
Thank you so much, Paul. Okay, if you leave your... Or you could actually contact Deputy Mayor Jenkins via email, and she could probably send you a link to that. If you go to the San Marcos website, san-marcos.net, and then you can click on City Council, and you'll see her name, and just shoot her off an email, and then she can get back to you on that, and she can address what you're discussing.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Moving on to ordinances. Item number 13, Ordinance 2022-1521: Introduction and First Reading of Ordinance Repealing and Replacing Municipal Code Title 14 Regarding Construction Within Streets, Sidewalks, and Public Places Underground Utility Facilities. Hello, how are you today?
Good evening. We're happy to be bringing forward two ordinances. This is the first of two. Stephanie Keller... Is that better? Excellent. Yes, my name is Isaac Etamini. I'm the City Engineer. So this is the first of two ordinances that we'll be bringing forward to talk to you about tonight. The first is regarding Title 14. And Stephanie Keller, our Principal Civil Engineer, is going to be presenting.
Thank you, Isaac, and good evening. First for your consideration is the repeal and replacement of our existing municipal code Title 14. This is the title that establishes requirements for private work within the public right-of-way and other public spaces, which, as we'll talk about, can include a lot of different things, usually for the construction of utilities, street improvements, and private encroachments. Key changes are listed here. Updates to Title 14 as presented in the staff report are recommended in order to clarify our requirements, ensure ongoing compliance with our technical standards, and streamline processing for routine encroachments. In this presentation, we'll focus on the key content changes that you see on this slide. So one major change to the ordinance is the addition of the definition of "public places." We've noted that excavations can occur in any public street or park or in any other property that is controlled by a government agency in its governmental capacity. And therefore, Title 14 has been revised so that its requirements can extend to any of these categories of public places, not just highways and street right-of-way. Another change to requirements is for the prosecution of work. For excavation, temporary restoration is to be complete within 48 hours of the original cut, and permanent restoration needs to be completed within 30 days after the original street cut. Public improvement should begin within 60 days of permit issuance and be completed within the timeframe fixed by the director. So we've built these timeframes into the ordinance so that work begins promptly, it's prosecuted promptly, and then it concludes promptly. And the director, of course, has the ability to extend these timeframes as may be necessary. We've also clarified the city's rights for its pre-existing facilities. City facilities may not be moved without prior director approval, and if they are going to be moved, then the applicants need to bear the cost of that relocation. The ordinance also states that when the city acts as an applicant, it will not be required to pay for moving utilities unless it's required to pay for it by law. And we've updated our technical specifications for backfill and restoration. The existing Title 14 included detailed technical requirements that were built into the ordinance. However, the technical requirements are treated much more thoroughly in these governing documents, the Green Book and our regional standard drawing. So to avoid conflicts between the two and duplicating text, we've just incorporated our standard documents that have already been adopted by City Council by reference. And then finally, new encroachment permit exemptions have been added. Typically, an encroachment permit is required whenever a private facility is to be constructed within a public place, those definitions of public places that we talked about. But with this modification, an encroachment permit is not going to be required for the kind of typical items that we see day in and day out, like low-growing vegetation or standard driveway pavement or mailboxes. There's actually a recognition built into the ordinance that these are things that can be constructed without needing an encroachment permit. And all of these facilities, of course, require maintenance by the private owner, and they do require removal when required by the director. We have reviewed the proposed changes to the ordinance with the Building Industry Association of San Diego. We also circulated them on the city website for a period of 30 days and did not receive any comment on the proposed changes. Therefore, staff recommends that City Council introduce the first reading of Ordinance 2022-1521, and we'll return to you with a second reading prior to adoption. We're here for any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephanie. Are there any questions of Isaac or Stephanie?
I have a quick question.
Sure, Councilmember.
Thank you for that presentation. Maybe you could give a brief background as to why we felt the need to update our ordinance? What was... What was... We thought was deficient about the previous version?
So periodically, as we use these ordinances, we kind of document and track things that are not addressed within the ordinances and efficiencies that can be gained by changes. And this is such an example that staff is bringing before you to examine those potential efficiencies and changes that would make it easier for the public to understand and work with.
So over the years, we recognize some flaws that we might have and keep track of those, and then once... After a period of time, we update the statutes as we go to make them work better for our needs?
And that's correct.
Okay, thanks.
Just for clarification, my understanding is too that we will see several more ordinances coming forward to streamline them, make them a little bit easier as, you know, as time goes on. Things are always changing with building codes and whatnot, and I know sometimes there's like a little bit of a gap there. I wouldn't say probably deficient, just needs to be updated to bring it up to today's standards just so that it's easier and costs less money and time for everyone.
That's correct, as well as addressing recent legislation.
Perfect. Okay, all right. Any questions or any further questions? No? Okay, I would move to introduce. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Any no's? No. Okay, motion passes unanimously. Moving on to item number 14, in Ordinance 2022-1522: Introduction and First Reading of Ordinance Repealing and Replacing Municipal Code, Chapter 17.32: Grading and Related Activities. And Stephanie, I think that's probably you again.
That's correct. Stephanie's going to be giving this one to you.
Wonderful, thank you.
All right, thank you both. And then here for your consideration, we have the repeal and replacement of our existing municipal code, Chapter 17.32. And in this chapter, we cover construction of building sites and erosion control requirements for grading permits and for inspection. The last modifications that we did to this chapter were in 2006, so it's time for that streamlining and incorporation of new legislation that Isaac was talking about. The biggest change that we've proposed here is simply to the organization of the contents. You know, we really do have an eye for streamlining and communicating our requirements clearly. So there are quite a few red line changes in here where we're moving pieces around to put it in a very logical sequence and make it easier to understand. We've also made some noteworthy content modifications that we'll talk about in greater detail here. So some of the more substantive changes, we formalized the option to submit a precise grading plan in order to allow for more flexibility in getting a site build ready. And formalizing this allows developers to choose, if they like, to rough grade a property only, and then include items such as the building footprint or the hardscape or landscaping, other details that they may not have defined early on in the process. They can come back and include that on a separate precise grading plan, and now the ordinance formally acknowledges that option. We've also incorporated rock crushing operations into our ordinance, and a director's permit or a conditional use permit is required. And the considerations listed in the ordinance include things like hours of operation and screening from adjacent properties and dust and noise control measures. Retaining wall permits are incorporated as well. We may require visual simulations depending on the situation. And walls that are under three feet in height and those that are already permitted on a building plan are exempt from the grading permit requirement. Another significant change involves new exemptions from the requirement to obtain a grading permit. So this revision is going to allow up to 200 cubic yards of grading to be exempt from a permit. It's an increase from our current threshold of 50 cubic yards, but it does make us consistent with other agencies such as the County of San Diego and other municipalities out there. Additionally, if grading is shown on a building site plan, that can be allowed by the city engineer and would be exempt from requiring a separate grading permit. So we're really working to streamline this process where it makes sense. For each of these possible exemptions, there are screening requirements in place that ensure that the products that... The projects that need that city review must obtain a permit, and then the small or really simplified operations are allowed to move forward with a more streamlined process. The proposed grading ordinance also incorporates requirements to address manufactured slopes over 15 feet and 20 feet in height. So currently, that is required... Doing a 15-foot or a 20-foot or greater slope requires a variance process. And instead of making those variance findings every time we have this situation, we've incorporated those same findings and then some into the ordinance itself, saying that a 15-foot slope, for instance, is allowed if all of these conditions are true. Some of those conditions require, for instance, that taller slopes need to do contour grading to mimic a natural appearance. Visual simulations could be required. And we think this is a nice way to eliminate the need for that variance process while still having control over both slope stability from an engineering standpoint and then the aesthetics of the slope from a planning standpoint. And finally, we've modified our requirements for erosion control and for clearing and grubbing. The proposed ordinance presents erosion control requirements for that interim condition when we're in construction and for the final condition when construction is complete to ensure the maintenance of the water quality features after construction ends. Proposed updates also address the distinction between clearing, which leaves the ground surface intact, so it doesn't cause as much of a concern for water quality, and grubbing, which is more invasive, and it removes the roots and disturbs the ground surface. So we've distinguished between those two to simplify requirements for clearing only. And we've added an option for a specific clearing and grubbing plan since that is something that we are often requested to process, but it wasn't incorporated into our earlier ordinance. Again, we have reviewed our proposed changes with the BIA. We've provided them on the city website for public review and received no comments. Therefore, we recommend that City Council introduce this first reading, and we'll return to you, if you wish, with a second reading prior to adoption. Thank you. and will return to you, if, if you wish, with a second reading prior to adoption. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephanie. Any questions of staff on this?
I have, I have one question. On page four, where you were talking about the wall requirements, that would be for residents as well as any development coming in, correct? Or is this only pertain to new development? So what if, what if a resident was building a retaining wall?
Sure, yes. This would address that sort of condition. If a resident wants to build a retaining wall and it's over three feet in height and it's not shown on a building plan that they're processing, then it could potentially require a grading permit. And this is generally consistent with our current practice, but we didn't have all of these requirements combined and consolidated in one place. So now, when reading the grading ordinance, you know that if you're proposing this retaining wall at your residence, that there's a possibility it could require a grading permit and that, that may not have been evident, readily evident before.
So three feet seems kind of low? Is that, did you say that's kind of industry standard?
Three feet is, is a pretty good industry, industry standard. And we would also evaluate the other circumstances surrounding that proposed wall. So if it's a very short section of wall, it's three feet in height, it's, it's far away from property lines or other structures, that would probably be something where they would come to us, they'd ask about it and we would let them know that we don't think that a permit is required. But if it's very close to a neighboring structure or if it is a very significant section of wall and there are otherwise, if the city otherwise feels that there's an interest in inspecting the backfill and ensuring that that wall is built properly, so it doesn't impact that homeowner or neighboring properties, then we might require the permit under the ordinance.
So if a resident's doing a do it yourself type project, I'm thinking of, you know, a tiered level of some kind, how would they know they need a grading permit?
Hopefully, they would come and they would ask.
Hopefully.
So, you know, we do make the grading ordinance available and our staff is really great at being available over the counter, by phone, by email. We're there whenever people have questions. If, if we don't get the questions, we can't answer them, but.
Okay, thank you.
Is that a motion also?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Sorry, council member Nanyas, did you have?
That's okay. I just have a clarifying question regarding the outreach and public comment. Can you clarify, I didn't quite understand how the Building Industry Association was involved. Did, did they give us public comment or some sort of input? Or how, it's not clear to me what, what happened there.
Thank you. That's a great question. We, we met with the Building Industry Association membership and discussed at a high level what our changes were, let them know that the ordinances were available for, for public review and provided the website to them directly and email and said, please comment. So we discussed verbally with them as well as providing them that written invitation to comment, but we, we didn't receive any comments from their membership or from anyone else.
Thank you for that clarification.
Okay, and then also, if you sign up for alerts on our website, then you would have been notified as well, correct? Yeah, perfect. Okay. Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Any noes? Okay, all in favor. Thank you very much. Moving on to public hearings, we have item number 15, Resolution 2022-9064, continuation of a public hearing, appeal of the Loma San Marcos Conditional Use Permit Renewal, CUP 21-0004, for the continued partial operation of a full-service entertainment production facility and phased expansion of the facility in accordance with the Loma San Marcos Specific Plan Area SPA LSM Zone. Okay, now we're, will it be you, Joe, that will be presenting this evening? Or?
It will not.
Stephanie's still sitting there, but I don't think that's her.
Good evening, Mayor Jones, council members. Sean Del Solar, the project manager, will be making the presentation along with Stephanie Keller.
Thank you. And before we now, it's an appeal of a conditional use permit renewal to allow the continued operation of a movie studio with youth sports filming activities and future phase redevelopment of the project site. Absolutely. For some background on the project, it's located at 1601 Santa Lejo Road on the west side of the closed landfill south of Santa Lejo Town Center. As seen outlined in red, the approximately 12 acre project site has a large parking field in front of the facility, which is located in the rear. A county-owned driveway bisects the site and provides access to both the project and the closed landfill. The facility was originally developed as a material recovery facility, but was closed in 1995. In 2004, the San Marcos Movie Studio Specific Plan was adopted to redevelop the site as a movie studio. However, after 14 years with no traditional movie studio being established at the site, in 2018, the Loma San Marcos Specific Plan and Conditional Use Permit were adopted. This allowed additional uses of the site related to the entertainment industry, including allowing youth sports filming. The Conditional Use Permit had an initial term of three years and has since expired, requiring this renewal. The Specific Plan primarily did two things, or excuse me, the 2018 Loma San Marcos Specific Plan primarily did two things. It split the first phase of development of the original movie studio Specific Plan into two sub-phases, 1A and 1B, and allowed the use of the facility for a movie studio, offices and storage within that first phase, 1A. The 2018 Conditional Use Permit, which requires renewal and is under appeal, allows the movie studio to be used for youth sports filming, contains conditions of approval for the phase redevelopment of the facility and requires the installation of a traffic light in Phase 1B of the project. In accordance with the approved Specific Plan, the facility currently operates in Phase 1A, which is the reuse of the existing facilities with the following uses: 61,650 square feet of movie studio, shown in orange; 108,135 square feet of storage, shown in purple; and 9,750 square feet of office area, shown in red. Future phases of development would include, excuse me, future Phase 1B of the project would install, again, the traffic signal at the project driveway at 77,774 square feet of floor area within the existing facility, expand the movie studio area throughout the entire facility and expand office spaces and add commercial tenant space to the front of the facility. Ancillary buildings would support storage and shop uses and other projects, excuse me, and the project would improve the rear parking area to support daily use. In its current unimproved state, it's used as overflow parking. Phase two of the project would convert the rear parking area into 120,000 square foot office building and build a parking structure. This aspect of the project is unchanged from the original 2004 movie studio Specific Plan. To help visualize the current use of the facility under Phase 1A, which it currently operates in, the next four slides will have panoramic photos from recently completed site visits. The facility is divided into three basic areas where three separate tenants operate businesses. In this image, in this image, soils media can be observed in the front portion of the building. Soils Media uses the site primarily for prop construction, demolition and storage and with the small workshop. There are two employees associated with this business and they have operations from 8:00 AM to 3:00 PM. Under the Conditional Use Permit, the movie studio space is used for youth sports, which are filmed for remote viewing and for the development of the athletes. The space is set up with five sports courts, which are currently all basketball. Operations of the youth sports filming occur between 3:00 PM and 9, excuse me, 3:00 and 9:00 PM on weekdays and 8:00 AM to 9:00 PM on weekends. The rear of the facility is used by UCC distributors who store comic book and comic book memorabilia as well as use the onsite offices. The company has between 10 to 20 employees onsite and shipping and receiving activities involve between five to 15 trucks per week. Operations of this business are from 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM on weekdays and there are no weekend operations. Lastly, the rear of the facility is currently used by San Diego Gas and Electric as a temporary outdoor staging yard for the Tie Line project. As part of the approval of that project, the California Public Utilities Commission circulated an environmental document that included the use of the site as a staging yard. The city provided comments on that proposed use of the site, but SDGNE, however, to SDGNE, however, it was approved by the CPUC and the permit to construct that was issued for the project. The SDGNE, SDGNE project has experienced delays during construction, but SDGNE has confirmed to the city that their use is expected to end by the, or conclude by the end of summer. The staging yard is set up in the overflow parking area of the facility, which has caused some impacts to larger youth sports events. However, the existing 199 parking spaces onsite remain available for larger events in the front parking lot area and around the site. It is our understanding the youth sports programs have been working around this issue and impacts to programs have been minimal. On March 7th, the Planning Commission approves the CUP renewal in a six to one vote granting an additional three-year term. At the meeting, the Planning Commission requested that the applicant further restrict left turns from the project driveway and the applicant agreed. Subsequent to the Planning Commission's approval of the project, the RV storage use that existed at the site was discontinued and the comic book storage use was expanded, as seen in the photo earlier. The applicant has also submitted a design to further restrict left turns, excuse me, left turns from the project driveway that will be discussed further in just a moment. 10 days after the Planning Commission approval, an appeal was filed by Jeff Deitch on March 17th. The appeal is provided in the staff report in its entirety as attachment H and consists of three points, which are also discussed in detail in the staff report, but summarized here as the following. Uses, number one, uses of the site require a new traffic signal, traffic light before operations based on the traffic study. The city council should vote to deny the project until the traffic light is installed and all these issue illegal uses are removed. Two, illegal and dangerous uses of the site, piles of dirt everywhere, gas-filled RVs and mechanic shops, all operating without business licenses. And three, Eden Park is marketed and listed as available for industrial use. The applicant is acting in bad faith about the future use of the site. The staff has prepared responses to these appeal points. And to discuss the first appeal point is Principal and Civil Engineer Stephanie Keller.
Thanks, Sean, and you're hearing from me again. Thank you for your patience tonight. The first issue that's raised by the appellant, as Sean was mentioning, is whether a traffic signal should be installed prior to any operation of the site. Studies were done in 2018 and 2020 to demonstrate that a traffic signal is not warranted with Phase 1A. Instead, warrants for the signal are met in Phase 1B when the intensity of the use would increase. Installing a signal now before it's warranted would unnecessarily add delay to Santa Lejo Road. Next, please. This slide summarizes the 2018 and 2020 studies that evaluated the site traffic and the signal. The 2018 study modeled the trips forecasted to be generated by the proposed movie studio, office and storage uses. The study found that a signal was not warranted, I'm sorry, the study found that a signal was warranted upon intensification of usage proposed with Phase 1B and it's not required with Phase 1A. However, at the 2018 city council hearing, the applicant voluntarily accepted a condition requiring signal installation within 18 months of the CUP approval, even though the warrants weren't met and even though the traffic study didn't require it. Again, that 2018 study, you see the, the provisions on the left there, that was prepared before the site was operational. And so the conclusions drawn at that time were based upon models and forecasts. The 2020 study on the ray, however, is based upon real life site usage prior to the pandemic. It considers the trips that are actually coming and going from the site on a weekday and on a weekend and counted trips for a mid-sized tournament. Next, please.
Just, just for quick clarification, on the counted trips for mid-sized tournament, that is still under Phase 1A or is it 1B?
It's under the Phase 1A, the current operation. So they went out and counted trips early in December on a weekday and then on a weekend. And then I think it was January or early February prior to the pandemic, they went out on a weekend during a mid-scale tournament and counted to see how many trips were actually coming and going in real life conditions.
Okay, so you're confident that it still meets the requirements of Phase 1A?
We are.
Okay, okay, thanks.
Thank you. And here is a summary of the trip generation that's based upon those two studies. So again, 2018 is based on model conditions and they're forecasting what, what traffic these users might generate. And then 2020, the uses are operational, so the engineers can actually go out there and count real cars. You can see that the actual volumes in pre-pandemic 2020 are significantly lower than were forecast with one exception, and that's the PM peak trips entering the site is, is slightly higher than the model had shown. Note that a traffic signal is not triggered in Phase 1A by either the higher model results nor by the actual site counts during operation. So neither one is high enough to trigger. Next. Now, the MUTCD, the Manual on Uniform Traffic Controlled Devices, which, which guides us in installing things such as traffic signals. It states that a traffic signal should not be installed unless one or more of the warrants are met. And in this case, the warrants are not met with Phase 1A. Accordingly, in 2020, the CUP was modified to remove the condition for early signal installation and to require the signal to be installed with Phase 1B when it will meet the warrants. Next. Now, here is a graphic of the existing site access at Santa Lejo Road. Until that signal is installed, left turns cannot be allowed out of the site. The county driveway to the site is currently subject to both the Loma San Marcos development that we're here talking about tonight and also to other traffic that accesses it to use the recreational trails. And in the graphic that, that you're looking at here towards the lower left side of the screen, the left part of that Y where you see the cars part, those are primarily cars that are parking for the recreational uses because the trails are right there. It's, it's actually quite a bit of a driveway extension to get into the Loma San Marcos site that, that goes off page. So those are, those are the recreational users. And vehicles from both the Loma San Marcos site itself and from this recreational use, they both have the, the potential to contribute to illegal left turns from the site and we are seeing some of those. So to address that potential, the applicant proposes to install improvements similar to what is shown on your screen. Since the existing break in the median on Santa Lejo Road, it's, it's a pretty wide gap that is enabling vehicles to feel like they can turn left across it out of the site. So the applicant would install delineators in the gap between the left turn pocket on the left and the median nose. And so it would narrow up and channelize that left turn into the site and provide a positive barrier for vehicles thinking that they might try to sneak in a left turn coming out of the site. It would block that off. No left turn signage would be added and the crosswalk and stop markings would be repainted. In addition, wrong way signage would be installed to address the possibility of drivers inadvertently using the inbound lane to exit. So it'll get a really nice refresh that we've, we've been thoughtfully working through with the applicant to try to address some of these movement concerns in and out of the site that we're seeing. We are still working with the applicant on the permit, but it's looking like the permit would be issued by the end of the summer and then constructed shortly thereafter. And with that, I will turn it back to Mr. Del Solar. Thank you.
Thank you. For the second point, the appellant states that there are unpermitted uses of the site that include piles of dirt, gas-filled RVs, mechanic shops, all operating without business licenses. Staff attempted to meet with the appellant to get more information about these complaints. However, those requests were declined. And so we conducted a number of site visits to the site to investigate these claims based only on the information provided by.
the site to investigate these claims based only on the information provided by these emails. The conclusions were that the onsite dirt piles referenced in the appeal are associated with the San Diego Gas and Electric's use of the site for their staging area. The previous, as previously indicated, those uses will end this summer in a few, excuse me, conclude by the end of this summer and are not a part of the CUP or specific plan. It's previously mentioned the RV storage use of the site was discontinued. There was no evidence of mechanic shop observed operating on-site, and that complaint was determined to be unfounded based on the information that we had available and the site visits. All uses operating on the site, as previously discussed, either conform to the Loma San Marcos specific plan or the conditional use permit allowing the movie studio to be used for youth sports filming. All three businesses observed operating at the site have business licenses approved, and the fire department has visited the site and confirmed that the fire sprinkler and alarm systems properly function and meet the design and density requirements to allow storage of materials and vehicles observed at the site as established by the National Fire Protection Association standards for extra hazard group one. For the third and last point, the appellant states that the Eden Park is marketed and listed as available for industrial use, and the applicant is acting in bad faith about the future use of the site. To provide some clarification, separate from the Loma San Marcos specific plan, an application was filed by another entity to redevelop the site as Eden Park in 2019. That application has been inactive since January 3rd, 2020, and to our knowledge, the Eden Park applicant is not associated with the current ownership of the property. Regarding the claim about the owner acting in bad faith about the future use of the site, the owner has been open and transparent with the city about the challenges they've had encountering, developing the site as a movie studio since the adoption of the first specific plan in 2004. In response to those challenges, the property owner submitted a land use change request as part of the general plan update to redesignate the site as light industrial, the designation prior to the adoption of the movie studio specific plan. The proposed change would continue to allow youth sports activities but require it under a director's permit that will continue to examine traffic impacts of the site if any expansions of the site, if the use occurs. Additionally, the change would allow additional uses of the site, as well as continue to allow movie and film production activities to occur but would require new permits for any future development or redevelopment of the site. That change is under evaluation as part of the general plan update and is not a part of this appeal or the conditional use permit renewal. The CUP renewal under appeal is consistent with the previously adopted mitigated negative declaration in DO 3681 and the 2018 addendum adopted by the city council on November 13th, In conclusion, staff recommends approval of resolution number 20229042 with 4CUP 21-0004, denying the appeal and providing a three-year extension of the Loma San Marcos CUP to allow the continued operation of youth sports filming at the facility and the phased redevelopment of the site requiring the installation of a traffic signal at the project driveway in Phase 1B of the project. This concludes staff's presentation.
Thank you so much, Sean. Do any council members have any questions of staff?
Do we want to hear from the?
Oh, I was just going to ask a couple of questions just first. Okay, so I did want to, okay, so the appeal points, item number one, it's right now being used under Phase 1A, and then the illegal and dangerous uses on-site, and it seems to me that we went out and it doesn't seem like there are any of those uses that are illegal. I did have a question because I've actually seen this myself, but I don't know that there's anything we can do about this. As I've driven by a couple of times, right at the pork chop, which I think, you know, right on that side where people park to actually go hiking, I've seen like a huge amount of aluminum cans and people sorting them. It's really weird. I've seen it at least three times, and I remember I keep thinking, oh, I've got to say something to someone. I don't think that's the applicant's property specifically. I think that might be county right there. I'm not entirely sure, but that, people might see that and go, is this associated with somehow what's going on there? So I just want some clarification on that, if you could maybe, who would handle something like that? And it's not the applicant I know because it's like one person, one truck, a bunch of stuff, and it seems like they're sorting through the aluminum cans. I mean, I don't think it would be any different than if someone just went up to a cul-de-sac and just dumped all these cans and started sorting them. I mean, it seemed like that kind of a situation, but I literally have seen it three times. Maybe someone could jump in. I know it sounds weird, but I literally have seen it myself, that's why I bring it up.
Yeah, I mean.
I know, it's weird.
It's pretty, it's pretty unique. I don't know exactly what the situation is. The property owner is here, I don't know if he has any knowledge that that's taking place in or near the, his property. That area out in front of the site is county land, it's the county easement, so we could look further into that. I just.
I think what would be useful is if we send code enforcement out to take a look. We can see if it's happening.
If it's happening, yeah.
What's happening, who's doing it, and approach it from a code perspective.
I just wanted to clarify, if anyone else had seen that, that it is on county land and it doesn't have anything to do with this, because it is, it's a weird situation. I literally have never said anything like that before, but I thought that I would bring it up because we're right here talking about this. Okay, and then, and then they are applying for a general plan amendment, but that is outside of what's happening today. We have no idea if that will actually end up happening. That's a separate action, 100%, correct?
Correct. They actually applied as one of the property-specific requests as part of the overall general plan update.
And for the folks out at home or in the audience, that decision will be coming to the city council approximately when?
Towards the end of next year or early the following year.
Okay, all right, so it's totally different, totally separate, but just wanted to have that on the record. Okay, and then we do have some speakers. Any other questions of council? No. Oh, sorry, go ahead. Deputy Mayor.
I just want to clarify a couple things as I was looking through this. So it looks like the staff has reached out to the appellant a couple times. Is it, and he has not been willing to meet with staff? Have we gotten him on the phone to have conversations about that at all?
That's correct. We have been corresponding via email, and most of those have been included in the staff report, but no, we haven't met with the appellant.
Okay, and he did not attend, from what I can tell, the June 28th Planning Commission meeting, correct?
If, we didn't receive any comments from the appellant at the public hearing, no.
Okay, and then, we had this on our, this hearing, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think two weeks ago, we had this on our June 12th, July 12th meeting to hear this, but he did not attend, and we had to postpone it, too.
I believe he actually asked for a continuance.
Yeah, it was, it was asked for a continuance, it was the meeting prior to the July 12th. So it's been a month ago.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that.
And just for clarification, Deputy Mayor, I do not have a speaker slip, so if Jeff Deitch is out in the audience, you need to fill out a speaker slip so you can speak if you wanted to speak on this item.
And.
Yeah, so if you just go in the back, sorry, if you just go in the back there, there's a box, you could just fill out a speaker slip, and then we could give that to the clerk, and then they will, sorry, do I have to not do this?
We can't require it, we can request it, and we do request it, so he's very kindly filling that out, but we cannot require a speaker slip to be filled out.
Okay.
That's all my questions for now, thanks.
Okay, so, we're speaking this evening, thank you. Let's start with our first speaker, which is Garrett McCormick, the applicant for the Loma San Marcos.
Did you want to allow the appellant to speak first?
Yes, we could do that.
Since it is his appeal?
Yeah, sure.
Just for form's sake, it seems like that would be the right thing to do.
Sorry, Mr. Deitch. If you, if you actually just want to come up, we can get that to the clerk in just a moment. Thank you for attending this evening.
No, I appreciate that, and I definitely appreciate you continuing this. I am a single parent and a business owner, so keeping to your schedule is a little tough for me sometimes, so I definitely appreciate you extending this and giving me a chance to speak today. Again, my name is Jeff Deitch, I'm a resident of Santa Leo Hills in San Marcos, and I prepared my remarks so that I can stay on track here. I specifically moved my family to San Marcos from Encinitas because I love the Santa Leo community and what it has to offer me and my children. I do believe, though, that there are some deficiencies in the amenities provided for what is the largest ever sub-community, not only in San Marcos, but honestly, that I've ever seen anywhere. It's quite an amazing place. I definitely, you know, appreciate the chance to talk here. In fact, my son kind of insisted on joining us today, he wanted to see how government worked, and some, this is how government works, the city council listening to the people and considering what we have to say. So thank you again very much for listening to me today. I am aware that this hearing isn't about the industrial activities at the site, but, you know, I realize it's to extend the sport uses, and I am generally for that effort, but I really continue to be frustrated with the lack of response regarding the occupancy permits for the other uses besides the sports uses. Other for the purposes of our conversation are for the areas the owner says are being used for movie studio, when it's already been shown that he wasn't using them properly, and many uses already had to leave. You've already kicked out the RVs and other things that were not approved uses. I don't believe that any of the uses are meeting the spirit of a movie studio. There's no filming going on and is not just storage, it's distribution with trucks in and out regularly as was shown in the presentation. Mr. De Solar, first of all, thank you for being responsive to my emails and getting this continuance. You did provide an occupancy permit for the sports use, building permit B19-00793 is what was provided, and that was for the sports use area only. It does not cover the other areas. I have yet to be provided any occupancy permits for any of the other buildings that are in use today and don't have proper permits. I'm growing suspicious that they have never existed, and this has been a major error from the city allowing illegal uses to function for years without proper occupancy permits. This is dangerous behavior from a city government. I'm fully aware that this council hearing is simply for the extension, but I don't know any other window to get heard since I have not been getting accurate responses. In fact, I learned more today in the presentation than were answers to some of the questions I'd asked previously. Because of that, I decided to live a little dangerously and play internet doctor and research the municipal code myself a little bit. I found it to be really informative, so I will make reference to it. The first thing I found was code section 20.535.070 named Annual Specific Plan Review. This requires the city to review each SPA annually. Exact language says for specific plans in progress, not fully developed, the director shall annually review the specific plan to provide a report to the Planning Commission and City Council on the development status. A copy of the annual report shall be provided to the applicant or successors or other interested parties. Can you confirm the city has completed this report annually? I heard there was a major accident at that intersection recently. I don't know if the council was aware of that or not. The traffic light, and this is quite honestly my biggest concern, my children ride their bikes over there, they've been at events at the facility, I see plenty of other kids there, really what this ultimately is about is their safety. And, you know, the, the traffic light really needs to be put up there. The other areas were not studied in the original traffic study. They weren't even contemplated because they weren't known about, they were empty and didn't have an occupancy permit. If they didn't have an occupancy permit when this was studied in 2018, then they, and in 2020, then they weren't there for the study to evaluate. These new uses would trigger a new traffic study and change the traffic results from 2018 and 2020, which remove the requirement. My request is to have the city council extend the license for the sports to operate but require a traffic light be put in immediately, and remove the so-called movie studio uses there which were never properly permitted for occupancy. In the city's code, the definition of occupancy is not related to the types of buildings but to the types of use, including multiple uses in one building, which is the case here. Chapter 20.600, under definitions, they say occupancy is each separate use of property conducted on a lot or within a building or any portion thereof. This means that each building and each use within each building needs an occupancy permit. In this section, they also mention abandonment, which is stated as 12 consecutive months of non-activity. It's my understanding that this building was used for trash and recycling in the 90s but sat empty for almost a decade, certainly longer than one year per the requirement, which would mean that it needs a new occupancy permit. According to section 20.550.020, violators are punishable by fine or imprisonment, and goes on to say that any use contrary to the zoning ordinance may be punishable by fine or imprisonment. By no means am I suggesting that we fine or imprison the owner, but we can't just turn a blind eye to the uses. At the very least, a traffic study should be performed by a third-party professional that can substantiate that a traffic light isn't really necessary since there are new other uses, which the owner claims are movie studio, but that didn't have legal occupancy at the time of original study. If someone gets hurt out there, like one of my kids, isn't the city liable if they didn't properly study this and they knew there was an issue? My kids have gone to this facility, I could tell you those uses were not there a few years ago. Why can't we show there is a legal permit and why wouldn't we study these? Again, I appreciate all of your service and appreciate your consideration here, but this owner has not been operating in good faith and hasn't followed the rules, and now he wants to change this to full industrial use. That's not what this community wants or needs. If he goes through the whole process and gets the council to approve industrial, then certainly I'll respect his right to do that, but right now he has gone around the proper process and has industrial uses without proper permits. Take a stand, please, and force him to put in a traffic light and remove the illegal uses. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Deitch, and thank you for bringing your, your son with you today. That is, this is how city government works, it's very fascinating, isn't it? Okay, I have a couple of questions of staff. So, first of all, does it really say fine or imprisonment? I don't remember ever seeing something like that, because that might be something that we have to look at and see if our, if our ordinance is out of date on, on something like that. Okay, so the annual report, did you want to update us on that, if that's actually being done?
Well, Mayor, as you know, there's like over 60 specific plans in the city. We're not, the, most of the specific plans, because they're so small, they're usually approved, developed, and they're done, there's no, there's no need for annual reports for them. Of the large specific plans that are ongoing, University District, heart of the city, we typically have projects involved in there, so the, so council is getting reports in terms of status and what's taking place within those larger specific plans. The smaller ones, like I said, that have been approved, they're typically built, and there is nothing more to report on because they're done. In terms of this specific plan, we've had several actions on it, but yes, the specific plan was adopted, there was no expiration, and it was dormant until recently where they started the youth sports filming, so I think that answers your question. Please let me know if it doesn't.
Yeah, yes, it does. So on the actual Eden Park, that is no longer happening, right? That is completely not at all affiliated, that's just not happening, correct?
The application has been inactive with the city. The property owner is here and has, might be able to provide some more information on that project.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I guess we will move on then to our public speakers, or unless someone had, yes, council member.
Yeah, thank you. Earlier on, somebody mentioned, I thought I heard, that under a designation of light industrial, youth sports would be permitted. Is that, is that what I heard, and maybe you could explain that a little bit?
Yeah, so this, under the light industrial, there is a use type within the light industrial called indoor recreation, which the basketball league, basketball sports would fit under, and it would require a director's permit, so it's a lesser permit than compared to the existing CUP.
Okay, thank you.
That would be much like SoCal volleyball, I'm assuming, right? Over on, is that La Marada?
Correct, I think there's a number of them in the city.
Okay, thanks. Oh, yeah, the cheer place, too. Yes, council. Yes, council member, Nunez.
I have a follow-up question. Can you clarify, because there's an allegation that there's occupancy permits that either haven't been turned over or they don't exist? Can you address that?
Yeah, absolutely. The building was type 2 construction and fully sprinkled to support an occupancy rating of B2H and a fire sprinkler design of extra hazard group 1. The design of the facility was to support the intended use of the building, which would have involved a steady stream of garbage trucks entering the facility, emptying waste onto the floor, and using bulldozers and other heavy equipment to sort out recyclable materials out of the waste stream and then basically load it onto semi-trucks, which are actually... The building was designed to have staged underneath to hold those materials either to the dump or the actual off-site for disposal. The code requires that when occupancies change to other uses not compatible with the existing occupancy, a new certificate of occupancy is required. On May 1st, 2019, prior to the youth sports filming use initiating at the site, the portion of the facility used for youth sports filming required a change of occupancy to allow the assembly of people onsite. A new certificate of occupancy was issued for that change of use, and inspections of the facility by the building division and fire department have determined that the other uses of the facility continue to comply with the existing occupancy rating of the facility, and the fire alarm and sprinkler systems continue to function as designed.
Thank you for that. So, that is that everything complies, what you're saying?
Correct.
Okay.
I have a couple of questions.
Yes, deputy mayor.
Couple of questions for staff. Do we currently have any illegal uses going on there?
The only use that doesn't comply with the Loma San Marcos specific plan is the SDG Nia use, which is currently operating at the site.
Okay, and that'll terminate?
Correct.
And they got CPUC approval, so they override us, right?
That's correct, yep.
We're used to being overridden. And then, with all our past data that we have about traffic and all of that, which was the reason why the traffic signal was incorporated into Phase 1B, could we even require, with all that research we have, could we require them to do that early? It seems like they could come back at us for regressive demands or something.
Requiring installation of the signal early would not be consistent with the guidance that's in the MUTCD, which prescribes when it could be installed. So, the city had imposed that as an early requirement, but imposing it is not consistent with the guiding documents.
So, again, those documents override us, so it has to stay in 1B, correct?
City council could find that they wish to install the traffic signal in an earlier phase of the project, and the applicant could agree to that, but again, it wouldn't be consistent with our guiding documents.
And we could cause more traffic issues for that stretch there and actually go out towards Rancho Santa Fe Road and into San Leoh by putting it in too early?
Right. One of the reasons that MUTC guidance doesn't allow the signal to be installed earlier, says that the signal should not be installed if warrants are not met, is because installing a signal that isn't necessary adds that additional traffic delay while everybody waits for cross-traffic that just isn't there.
Right.
So, it would impact San Leoh Road.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we have three speakers on this item. First is Garrett McCormick, followed by Frances Donnelly, followed by Shelby Wilkerson. So, Garrett, you're up, and you are the applicant.
I am. Thank you very much for hearing us tonight. I wanted to let you guys know that I've been working closely with staff, and I have an open line of communication with them, and I'm more than willing to work with them on anything that comes up with the traffic that's associated with the project. Also, I took all the concerns that the appellant brought forth, and I tried to address all them to make it so that we could take care of it before we came in front of council while we're here. But I think I've addressed everything that needed to be done, and I'm still open to working with city staff in the event that something comes up in the future. We do have a proposed plan to take care of the traffic if that does not work. You know, I have no problems working with staff to make other changes. That's pretty much all I have. If anybody has any questions, I'm here.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? Nope, saying none? Thank you very much. Next speaker is Frances Donnelly, followed by Shelby Wilkerson.
Hi, good evening, thank you. My name is Frances Donnelly. I live in San Leoh Hills, and I've been here before. You should have received a series of photographs as part of the public comment, whatever we call it. I submitted those as part of this presentation. And look, I'm gonna kind of jump over everything I had prepared because I was unaware of the information coming from the planning department with regard to the changes that the applicant has agreed to or is willing to support with regard to the road, right? In particular, I had no awareness of the fact that they were going to turn the... I'm gonna put it this way, the left-turn lane from San Leoh Road that goes into the site, it looks like there's going to be a barrier across the whole median that will prevent the big issue with the pork chop, which is that people can leave making a left-turn lane. You've already seen my photographs indicating that on May 28th, which is when they had, I guess maybe a medium-sized event, we had a series of cars... I mean, I just happened to go there to take a picture because one of the things that happens is visitors to the site are parking all over that area and not going into the site to pay their parking fee. So, it's creating a little bit of distress for people who want to use this as part of the community because their parking spaces are being taken by people who should be paying. So, I can go through those pictures one by one. I don't know what the best way is to do that at this particular point in time.
Well, we all have them here at our desks, so you could just talk about them. I did want to clarify one thing. The barrier, it is the candlesticks, correct, that we're talking about?
Yes, they're kind of beefier delineators. They're about three inches in diameter. This will be our first installation of them in San Marcos, and they will run from the existing median nose and channelize that left turn in.
Okay.
So, if you may go to make that left turn into the site, you can only make a left turn into the site. Anybody on the site trying to come out and make a left turn to go southwest on San Leoh will be prevented by the candlesticks.
Correct.
Right, okay, so that's the first time I've seen that. Great forward movement. Here's my problem, though, guys, really. There was two reasons for the traffic light, right? The first reason, I'm gonna suggest, I'm gonna read from a report from Chen and Ryan back in 2018, right, that specifically said, "The purpose of the pork chop is to improve safety at the intersection because it prevents drivers from crossing two lanes of traffic on a major arterial with limited sight distance due to the location of the driveway, which is the middle of a horizontal cart." So, it looks like we're kind of saying, okay, if we can enforce it, we can handle that. But at the city council meeting in 2018 when this was approved, the vast majority of the audience that requested the light go forward anyway were residents of San Leoh Hills who had a real concern about the fact that this pork chop causes all traffic leaving the site to go up to Baker, make a U-turn, and come back out. And everybody was willing to live with that for a couple of years. And the applicant said, "I'll take care of it, I will do it." And then, right as we all get slapped down with COVID, the applicant comes back to the planning commission and says, "We got some new information." Now, the problem is the new information was data from December of 2019 and from February of 2020. And at the time that that meeting took place with the planning commission, if you check the records, staff report will show that the data provided was considered inadequate, and additional data was requested, but there wasn't time or ability to get it because COVID prevented the work being done. So, the data that we're looking at that says it's okay to direct the traffic out of the site to the right and into San Leoh Hills is insufficient and inaccurate, and the staff report clearly states that. So, I'm having a real difficulty here. I appreciate the changes the applicant has made now that someone's come up and said, "Let's make the changes," and it's, right? But you're not digging deep enough. And I got to tell you, it's hard. I spent the last day and a half going back and downloading planning commission documents because I knew what the dates were, and I don't see that you've gotten that content. So, I think that we're still in a place where the traffic light should be considered as a safety requirement because of the curve on the road, and because the alternative is to dump that traffic into the community of San Leoh Hills and just make that traffic so much worse. And you've seen from the evidence I already provided that there is frequent misuse of the turn and people coming out. So, that's all I got. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you, Frances. Next speaker is Shelby Wilkerson.
Good evening. My name is Shelby Wilkerson, and I'm a mom of two middle schoolers in San Leoh Hills. My kids are eighth and sixth grade. I'm sharing this about myself because I feel like it is slightly relevant, but up until recently, I'd been a weekly school volunteer, room mom, and very involved in the community. I'm here tonight, full disclosure, I know Jeff. He and my husband were involved as volunteers with the YMCA Father Daughter and Father-Son Adventure Club program, and it just is a dumb stroke of luck that when I was speaking to him, it was in July, I believe, and I was like, gosh, I'm just so excited for, you know, that... We call it Eden Park because that's what it says coming in, and that's what my daughter plays basketball there. I'm like, I'm so excited for that vision to finally come to fruition. And he's like, "Hey, I think they might be going a different direction." So, I was very alarmed by this. I asked what I could do to help, get the word out, get signatures, and he's like, "Well, you can speak at a city council meeting," and that's why I'm here. So, my family has benefited from this space that we're speaking about in San Leoh Hills. My daughter's attended basketball camps, tried out for competitive teams, and she's currently playing rec basketball games there on Sunday. I didn't write this down, but something that came up when the other speaker was up here. I don't know if you guys have more than one kid, but when you have two kids, you often can't be two places at one time. So, if you have a partner or spouse who travels, you sit there and wonder like, "How am I going to be here and how am I going to be here?" Well, my kids are in middle school, so there was something that came up. My daughter, her basketball game was going to be at Eden Park, and I started wondering like, do I feel comfortable with her taking her e-bike down, crossing that road while I'm with my son over at Pacific Ridge? And I was like, no. So, I was telling her like, "Can you go all the way down here and then go at the crosswalk?" So, I do understand why people have brought up that need for a stoplight, because when I've been at that facility, I've seen bikes, I've seen e-bikes, and a lot of kids do have to get their own transportation like that to attend these types of programs. Okay, so, as background, we residents of San Leoh Hills were thrilled to find out several years back that plans were in development to bring a huge community asset to our neck of the woods in the form of a sports complex. We talked about it regularly in our women's community page, and we saw it as something to bridge the gap of what we so desperately needed, healthy and positive activities for our young people to do, since we're constantly, constantly, hearing complaints of kids loitering, being a nuisance, stealing from local businesses, et cetera. Then came COVID. We saw construction halted all around us, not just in that area, but most of us assumed that plans would get back on track. Apparently, we were wrong. It's my understanding the owner of the land, which I think you're here, is perhaps wanting to go a different direction and see those 13 acres be used for light industrial use, and I would hope that he would see what a massive, massive gift it would be to our community to stick with the original vision of a sports complex where community comes together and gives young people, older folks like us, a place to participate in healthy activities. Some points I'd like to quickly speak on. Post-COVID, now more than ever, we need this original vision to come to fruition. Almost every parent I talk to has the same concerns: kids addicted to screens, lack of structure, lack of respect, depression, and anxiety. I know from playing sports my entire youth that organized sports help in all of these areas. Also, negative behavior of middle schoolers and high schoolers have ramped up in our community to the point of needing to bring in more law enforcement. We are in danger of losing our small businesses who are sick of dealing with these bored kids. Let's give kids more opportunities to have structure and convenient activities, particularly with families who simply don't have the time to drive kids outside the community to get them to their activities. I am pretty much a stay-at-home mom. I do some part-time sales that's very flexible, so I'm able to drive my kids to Encinitas for basketball and Carlsbad for soccer, but I know so many families who do not have that, single parents, two-working families, and from what I'm seeing of a lot of my friends, they're all going back into their actual jobs. They're not working remotely. It's starting with three days a week. Many of them are up to full-time, and it just gets harder and harder to get your kids to these activities that are so beneficial. So, there's lots more I can say on this topic, but I would once again ask the city council to extend the sports usage permits, which it sounds like that happened. Thank you. And also ask the current landowner to maybe stick with the vision for this area as per the discussions back in 2019 and 2020, and I will get as many people as you need to sign petitions or do anything we can to keep that going on track.
Thank you, Shelby. Okay, let's... Does the council have any questions of staff again? No? Okay, all right. At this point in time, I mean, I agree with you, that's a great use. It's a little bit different than what we're talking about tonight because the change of light industrial is not what's happening tonight. We're talking about just the conditional use permit, which would allow the movie studio taping to go on with the youth sports. But I think it's important just to explain that those are two different things, and as I asked staff earlier, that's because I kind of figured people might have questions about this. That's why I asked staff a little bit earlier when that decision, if there would be a decision of changing it to light industrial, that would happen sometime after the end of next year, just for clarification on that. But on this particular question of what's happening is a few different things. So, the property owner is asking for a continuation of the... I'm sorry, not a continuation. Well, yeah, continuing the use that was approved back in 2019 was changed, correct? It was 2018, but then the change was in 2019 that allowed the light to actually come at Phase 1B, which has not actually happened yet. So, there was a discussion that the folks that live in that area do believe that the traffic patterns have changed and that there is a change. Is there... I know you guys have gone out there, I know I drive by quite often. I'm just wondering, we don't have any information on that, and there was a discussion or a point brought up that there was something else that was supposed to be contained that we haven't seen. Can you... About the traffic, do we know what that is? I'm not sure because I can't locate that. I'm sorry. You guys are looking at me like you don't know what I'm talking about.
No, we know what you're talking about. And we heard that point. I was trying to recollect what Ms. Donnelly could be referring to specifically. Are you able to be more?
I'm sorry, you need to just come up to the podium so we can have this on the record. Sorry, I thought I wrote a note, and I can't find my note of exactly what you said, so my apologies on that. I don't know where you put it.
At the planning commission meeting that I believe took place in, I think it was June of 2020, but it was the planning commission meeting where the applicant had failed to begin work on the traffic signal that they had committed to, and so they went to the planning commission, and the staff report that accompanied that item on the planning commission agenda, which I think might have been 61 of 2020, right? In that, there was a paragraph that identified that there was a desire for additional information about the full impact of the traffic study, but it couldn't be expanded because the last review was February 19th, or February, I think, maybe February 20th of 2020, and the lockdown for COVID, I believe, took place right around early March. So, there was just an inability to do... So the, there was just an inability to do, the, the site was not active, and there was an inability to do any additional activity. In fairness, I think that the pictures that I produced earlier for May 28th are about the third time I've seen traffic parking in that outside area indicating that there's an event taking place. So even, we haven't really gotten up to speed, I think, in terms of the tournaments that are taking place, but I, can we? I think I, I think I went to the city council, no, the Planning Commission Agenda website. I think it was June 1.
We'll work on finding that. Thank you very much, Frances, for clarifying that. Any other questions or discussion of the council? I mean, I, I know I've been there several times actually hiking, and I do park there, so I'm not sure how we would know who's parking there for an event or who's parking there to actually hike. I don't, I don't know that there is a, any way to figure that part out. Anyway, any discussion? Yes, Ren, go right ahead.
Thank you, Mayor.
Did you want to close the public hearing?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, let's go ahead and close the public hearing. I make a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, motion and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any notes? Nope. Okay. Yes, council member.
Thank you. So that, that, that building has quite a storied history, right? And when it was abandoned as a trash energy plant, over the years, there's been tons of considerations of how it might be used. All, of course, it's privately owned, so they have to go through a process. Back in 2006, I think it was 2006, and the staff might not, not even know this, we met with a bunch of entrepreneurs who wanted to put inside that building the world's largest indoor motocross track, right? And for many of us that, who lived in San Lejo, as I, as I did, that was a non-starter, right? Because you can imagine all of the, all of the moto, motorcycles on our trails. But we get this a lot as a city council, and that is, people will say, "How come you don't do this in, in the city? We want this store or this place." And of course, we all say the same thing, and that is, well, you know, we can't force a business to come to the city and set up something. We can ask, and we do all the time, right? We'll say, "Hey, Trader Joe's, why don't you come to San Marcos?" And, you know, we're all kind of hoping. But it's, at the end of the day, it's up to private people wanting to do private business in private, in, in places. And I, in, in some ways, I agree with Mr. Deitch that this is, it's sort of a fiction at this point that this is a movie studio, and it's being used for movie studio purpose as it's been, as it's sort of its, its, its supposed use. And there's no doubt in, in the years ahead, it's gonna be something totally different. Maybe something that really serves the community. Maybe it's something entirely different. But I think tonight is mostly about traffic and a signal. And I can recall our conversation back when we had our meeting a while ago. And, and, and I'm not convinced, that wasn't then, and I'm not tonight, that just putting a traffic signal up might not worsen traffic on San Lejo Road at times. I mean, if you've tried to drive through that community in, in the morning, which I have a ton of times, or in the afternoon, it gets backed up all the way, sometimes way up San Lejo Road, especially during school pickup and drop-off. So I, I'm, I'm, I'm not inclined tonight to, to, to change the way we voted last time and to force the applicant to put a, a signal in at this point in time. I do think it's gonna be necessary, and maybe in the not-too-distant future, but, but I don't think, for me, not tonight.
Okay, thank you, council member. Anyone else have any thoughts?
I asked my question.
Okay.
I've asked my question. I'm fine.
Okay. Do we have a motion then? No other further discussion or questions?
Is the motion to deny the appeal, is that, is that what we're doing? Yeah, I, I move to deny the, the appeal.
Okay. I'll second it. Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any notes? No. The, it is denied.
I have a point of clarification.
Sorry.
Helen, does the, the recommendation have three bullets to it? Do the second and third bullets need to be incorporated, or the fact that the resolution covers all three, does that cover it?
The resolution covers everything.
Okay.
So you, your action approves the resolution, so you've, you've got it all covered.
Okay.
It's denying the appeal and, and approving the conditional permit renewal. Yes. Okay, moving on. Any more oral communications? No? Okay. Okay, moving on to reports. AB 1234. I have Sandec, and I didn't bring my notes, but I did bring up the actual agenda, so I'll be able to find it real quick. And, sorry about that. Ah, let's see. Oh, there was an independent auditor, annual audit plan that came up. A lot of the things that we've been asking for, for a while, will be audited at a later date, and there was a schedule that was included with the agenda. I would say the biggest thing, oh, and then the Regional Vision Zero Action Plan and Resolution, which we did approve. It was unanimous. I would like to bring that to our city as well. Then we discussed the Central Mobility Hub, which was the regional transit connection to the airport. We spent about $20 million on that so far, and we don't actually have a plan yet, which I have a bit of a problem with. We had some discussion on that. It was a little bit heated. Some of the consultants that we have used are making quite a bit of money on that, so I plan on getting an answer actually, who's been paid what on that, being that we don't actually have a plan. Because first, we started out with the Spaywar site. Now it looks like we're looking at a downtown site that may include 101 ASH, which is San Diego, the City of San Diego's issue right now, which I personally have a problem with because that is a very costly, expensive project to remediate. And then also, I don't think that we should be putting our Central Mobility Hub in a location where we have to save the City of San Diego out of a, a very bad business decision. And then we also talked about the draft Regional Transportation Improvement Program, and then also innovative concepts. And that was actually a very good discussion about innovative concepts because the future of transportation, much of it is going to rely on autonomous vehicles and vehicles that do not have drivers. And, and if we had that right now, right, Deputy Mayor, we would, we'd be a lot better off because right now we have an issue with North County Transit in itself not able to locate enough employees to actually run the buses, and so we've cut back on some of the actual routes, unfortunately, which, you know, one of our speakers earlier talked a little bit about adding more. We can't even actually run the, the routes that we already have right now due to a shortage in the workforce. So autonomous vehicles will be something that's in the future. So we did allocate some money to look into that. And I was actually speaking to our representative on the Airport Authority, and this is really interesting. He said that actually it's moving forward that we will be using airspace, like low-flying autonomous vehicles, to get people places, much like a taxi cab, sooner than we actually think. And so when I brought that up to Sandec staff on my pre-meeting for the Board of Directors meeting on, for Friday, they said, "Oh, it's interesting that you bring that up, Mayor, because we have actually a, a project that we have approved, that we will be doing a budget amendment coming up in September for just that reason." So it's very exciting what's happening in transportation, but a lot of it is, is truly going to be autonomous vehicles, and that's the innovative concepts that we were talking about, and that's about it. And so our next meeting is not actually going to be until September 9th because we are dark for August, much like the city council meetings, so we will not have any meetings next month because we actually approved not having any, having any meetings in August, unless, of course, we have an emergency, which we'll always have a meeting if that happens. And that's about it. And then moving on to North County Transit. Deputy Mayor.
Yes. We had our meeting last week, several highlights from it. And I believe you received an email from our chair about the ad hoc committee, our new ad hoc committee, and I believe the city managers are also getting one. So we are creating a new committee that's going, because of the unprecedented federal funds that are available, we really want to collaborate and leverage the dollars that are available for transit and North County Transit with the cities where possible. It could be developing quiet zones, grade separations, any rail quality of life improvement. So there will be a new committee starting to evaluate that, so we can be ready when the funds come. Couple things worth mentioning in San Marcos. There'll be four, actually, there'll be four directors on that. And then NCTD is asking the cities to provide a staff member that might want to be part of that and discuss what needs we would like here in San Marcos. Something worth mentioning is, one of the reasons that this is important for San Marcos is, as you know, we have the Sprinter run through and we have the Loop. Eventually, the plan is down the road, this is gonna happen overnight, but eventually the Loop may be double-tracked. And eventually, the Sprinter may run every 10 to 15 minutes. So that's gonna create a lot of issues, could create some issues. So this is an opportunity for staff to think about what those issues might be and try to capitalize on these funds.
So that's the ad hoc committee that you're talking about specifically? Yeah, I, I actually forwarded that because I received it too, to Michelle, so she's, she said she's already on it.
She, yes, we are on it. Development Services has the, the notice, and we're gonna be working on assigning a staff member.
Good, good.
And then the other thing I want to mention is we are evaluating bringing our bus operation, our Breeze Lift and Flex operations back into North County Transit. And right now, we have a contract with MV Transportation, and we are looking at, like we did with the rail, if we want to bring that back to having that done in-house. So that's in the process of being analyzed, evaluating the strengths and weaknesses of all of that. And we'll probably have a recommendation later this year for that.
Does this mean we would get our microtransit sooner than later?
No promises there.
Our microtransit, for you folks that are out there that you, you might not be aware of, it's our shuttle. And we already, it's modeled much like the Carlsbad Connector, which you guys voted that, I forget what, what month it was that you voted to move forward on that?
For the pilot.
Yeah, for the pilot, and, and unfortunately, now that there are the shortages with the employees, that's not going to happen, so I'll be hoping and praying that if it comes in-house, that will actually change something.
Well, that's something that North County Transit is working with the city on.
Nice.
Yeah. And then the third item that's of interest, I think I mentioned to you a while back that we have a youth opportunity pass that gives free fares on NCTD and San Diego MTS to youth aged 18 and under, and then also foster youth beyond 18. But in the initial ridership, we went up from, so April, system-wide, the ridership for youth was up 75% in April versus May, and then 33% in April versus June. So we're starting to get some good ridership, getting youth to ride transit. So we'll, we'll continue to evaluate that because those funds come from NC, I'm sorry, Sandec and County of San Diego, and it's approved through June of '23. So we're keeping a close eye on that to see if, if something like that will be able to continue.
Well, there's also-
But the ridership rate numbers are, right now are good.
Well, there's also discussion to make transit free-for-all moving forward, though there's no funding that's identified for that yet. It'd be interesting to know what the numbers are in summertime versus during school. Are they going to be watching that pretty closely?
Yes, they mentioned that, that they expect them to come down during the summertime and then go back up and hopefully in fall. But this isn't geared to just getting students to school.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah. Got it. Okay. Okay.
I'm sorry, we are dark in August. Our next meeting is in September, our regular meeting. We might need to have a special meeting, takes about five minutes, to extend our remote meetings. But other than that, we're dark in August.
Okay. And Councilmember Nunez, I skipped you on your League of California Cities, but I don't think you've met, have you?
We haven't, Mayor. We are dark this month, so our next meeting is scheduled for August the 8th.
And August the 8th, is that the big meeting, or is that September?
So August, we have elections on our agenda, so that will be the big item. We'll select our, our new directors for, for the San Diego Division. And I think what you might be thinking, Mayor, we do have our annual conference scheduled for September in Long Beach, and so I'm scheduled to be there, and I will be attending with Jack if he decides to come back.
Oh, well, don't, don't say that. We just extended his contract, so he has to come back. Okay, North County Dispatch, Councilmember Walton.
Yeah, we do not meet until August 24th.
Okay. Clean Energy Alliance, Councilmember Musgrove is not here today. He's on vacation as well. Maybe, no, I'm just kidding. They're, they'll both come back. City Council Business Visits, I think there was one today, wasn't there? There it is. Well, that looks like a fun place. Where's that?
It's in La Costa Meadows Business Park, and it's, it's, it's a company called Rochambeau, and they make sunglasses and now prescription glasses for children. And I sort of wish the, the folks were here previously because when people hear the word industrial or light industrial, they get these ideas that people are gonna be, you know, shaping steel and smokestacks are gonna come up. But this is one of many, many examples of a light industrial space that's used for more of a creative purpose. So this is one of those great stories where the gentleman in the middle, Scott, was at a Padre game a decade ago with his wife, and I think it was his niece or nephew, and the sun was beating down, and he was trying to block the sun in his, in his nephew's eyes, and putting his sunglasses on the child who wanted to pull them off. And, you know, lightning struck in that moment, and he wondered, "Man, is this, is this, is this an idea?" And over the next couple of years, he did some research and kicked it around. He's a lawyer by, by profession, and he was working at a big law firm downtown. And he and his wife started to do some research, and they, they thought there was an opportunity. And then they, they looked around for materials and manufacturers, and they made a couple of glasses, and they were well-received. And it's, that was really, they started in 2012, but they really kind of view their starting date as 2016 because that's when they really went retail and started to sell to the general public. Prior to that, it was more of a charitable thing that they were doing. And they've been growing ever since. Maria, why don't you tell them about how much they've grown?
Yeah, no, I think, right, we always say this, like, we can't believe they're in our backyard. It's also hard to believe that, that they're new to our city. It was very interesting to hear how they, they first, when they first started, they were, I believe he said he was using a relative small office space.
Right.
And then ended up securing a location, and thought, Scott thought to himself, "Oh, gosh, we're gonna be here for years and years," and then outgrew the space, and then obviously moved around a couple of times, and then bought the building that they're in, in San Marcos. So they definitely plan to stay here. It sounds like they're expecting quite a bit of growth for next year. And I believe it's because of the prescription space that they've, that they've gone into. So it's a great business, and I hope we return in a short amount of time and see how much they've grown.
Well, I'm excited about the picture because that shows flexible glasses. Because I don't know about you, I happen to sit on them. You stuff them in the diaper bag, they get smooshed, and those look indestructible, so those look really neat. I love that. Super cool. Super cool.
Yeah. And I'm glad you mentioned that, Mayor, because I think that is, right, where he says that that is sort of the crux of their business in the way they construct the glasses themselves. And they're very specific. They manufacture in Italy, and they want to stay manufacturing there, and then they assemble here in our backyard in San Marcos.
I'm more comfortable when they're flexible like that on the little faces. Very good.
Yep.
Okay. Oh, San Marcos Creek Project Assistant City Manager, Michelle will give us that today. Ben Dork.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, we have some pictures. There's a lot of action out in the creek. There we go. Phil's pulled up a picture. You can see that this is actually a picture of the grading on Discovery looking eastward. So Discovery is now graded. When we took our last tour, half the road was graded, and then it sunk all the way down several feet. So now we're fully graded, and the roadwork can start to begin. This exciting picture of large equipment doing very large things. It's drilling and reinforcement cage at the abutment. So we're really, this time, not as exciting as Ben's. So we're drilling, and fingers crossed, touch wood, it's going well so far. And then the last picture, you can see casing being placed into the drill foundation hole. So Isaacs informed me that they put these large cases in so that we don't have any collapse in the hole once it's dug, and then they pour the concrete in after the fact.
And that's the Via Veracruz Bridge?
This is the Via Veracruz Bridge, yes.
Exciting.
Yes. One other item, Discovery Street is now closed between Via Veracruz and Applewild, and that closure is expected to remain in place through the summer as we get through the construction.
So best advice is try to avoid as much as possible unless you really have to go over there because you live there.
Yes, please.
Okay. All right. Anything else? No? Council commentary. I just wanted to talk a little bit about what happened last... Well, what day was that? It honestly seems like a month ago, but it was really only just a couple of weeks ago, and that was the grand reopening of Finally Home. So it moved down the street from Creekside Drive over to the Creekside Marketplace in a larger location. So she grew, which is awesome. We love to see that. And then also in North City, we had two things happening, and that was on National Ice Cream Day, I guess it is, on Sunday, Winston's opened in their new location. So lucky for Chris. And by the way, both of these two businesses are owned by San Marcos residents. The cool thing was they moved from 100 square feet to 1,000 square feet, but one of the owners had to drive all the way down to Ranch of Bernardo to actually make the ice cream. And so we had to go and make it, bring it back, and it was a lot of work. And so now he just gets to make it in the back. I went in there to get some ice cream last weekend, and they were like, "Oh, it's frozen so solid. We're going to have to wait just a little bit. We just took it out of the freezer because we're not used to this, not having the travel time." And then also last week, Maya's Cookies opened up, which is a brand-new business to San Marcos, right next to Winston's Ice Cream, right there in North City, next to Copavita and Buena Fuerta, and then also Fresh Healthy Cafe and Nutopia Cider. So it's all now a full block of places to eat or drink something. So very exciting. North City, which is right there at Campus View and, or I'm sorry, Campus View Way, North City Drive off of Barham. So it's right down the street from, across from the university in that area. So a lot of fun things happening in our city. I love it when we have ribbon cuttings and also Instant Imprints opened just last week also. So we have a lot of stuff happening. So anyway, any other commentary this evening? Okay. All right. Well, with that, this meeting is adjourned. We will see you back here in September.